Would like to call to order the November 5th, 2018 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners Work Session. Welcome everyone. First item on our agenda tonight is approval of the work session agenda, including the changes on page three. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Send me a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move now to discussion items, and we are very happy to have with us tonight, Kate Sharp, to give us a Cabarrus County Fair update. Welcome.
Unfortunately, as all of you are aware, Hurricane Florence resulted in us shutting the fair about three days early. Historically, that is the largest impact the fair has had to experience in our 66 years. So the silver lining is, this is a hopefully once-in-a-lifetime situation. We were also fortunate that we were able to safely get everything broken down in time, just before the weather started to impact our area. It's interesting, because those of us who do event management say, "You must have done something right if the first thing that your customers aren't thinking about is the background details, the setup, the day-to-day operations, and certainly the breakdown." We were fortunate enough that we had a lot of people on our side to help get everything done in time, but it takes a little bit of a village to get everything together, especially three days sooner than we anticipated. Of course, our patrons are important to us, but so are the folks who safely work behind the scenes doing the fair. And there's a lot more detail that I think a lot of the folks who walk through the gates don't think about. A good example would be our ride company. They're based out of Wilmington, North Carolina. So they were working really hard at our fair, but their hearts and their minds were on their homes in Wilmington, and everybody bracing for the impacts that were potentially going to come to their area. So there's more to it than I think meets the eye, and there's a lot of really great stories that come behind that. We have, we could sit here for hours probably, and I could give you a lot of numbers and statistics, but the reason I really wanted to come talk to you was, we've received extraordinary feedback this year on this year's fair. And extraordinary feedback also comes with negative, and we received some negative from those who purchased advanced discount tickets and were not able to use them. And like I like to say, the silver lining in that is it made us take a pause when the fair was over and evaluate our advanced ticket sales. And that's just one example, but it turns out that a lot of time and resources goes into those, and less than 5% of our sales. So less than 5% of the people coming through the gate are even taking advantage of that opportunity. So I think we're better suited to find something else that more of our citizens can take advantage of that are at discounted rates. So you'll see some of that next year. But again, back to a lot of the positive comments, we've received handwritten notes, and emails, and phone calls, and we always receive some of that. But the level of who has reached out to us to talk about how good the first six days of the fair were, and how seamless the weather plan execution was, I think is extraordinary, because it's very easy to pick up the phone and call and complain when you're frustrated or angry. It takes something extra special for you to pick up the phone, or put pen to paper, and congratulate and commend, and that just tells a tale of the people that are involved in the fair, and what it takes to do it. And I think that that's something special that we have, that nothing else can compare to. And so when we look back at 2018, for us now, I mean even today, we had two people come through the door to talk to us about how well they felt like things were handled with the weather, and how seamless the fair had gone up until that point. For us, we're not going to look at the weather, or how the budget was impacted. It'll be the people, and how they all came together. We had volunteers who, instead of securing their homes, were with us trying to break everything down safely. And so with that, I really wanted to also thank each of you for your support and your encouragement. It certainly was a challenging fair for us, and I know it meant a lot to a lot of our staff and volunteers, to those of you who got to speak to them, and to me, and I'm very appreciative. We're hardworking on 2019 already. Our theme for next year is fairly extraordinary, and I think we are. And with that said, I promised I was going to stick to my five minutes, but if I can provide any clarifications, or answer any questions, I'd be more than happy to.
Any questions for Kate?
No, I don't have any questions. I'm just going to join a long list of people that complimented you, Katie. I thought you did excellent, you know, of course, I told you that when I seen you out there that day. You know, we have, if not the best, one of the best fairs probably in the country, and it takes a good event coordinator, programmer, to make that happen, and you've really done good. You just outdo yourself every year. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know it is difficult when you plan something for an entire year, and then have to cut it short with the weather, but I think you made the right decision, and I'm so glad that most people were understanding about it. I thought it was an excellent fair. I enjoyed my time out there. Kudos and congratulations to you and all your staff and all the volunteers. I think you did a great job.
Joseanne is with me, behind me, hiding in the background. She's the brains of this operation, Joseanne Levy. She's the one in the front office who takes the brunt of it, especially when folks aren't happy, but she's been joyfully enjoying all of the positive things that have been coming our way.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up on our agenda, we're glad to have Emery Ortiz from the library to talk with us about their survey results.
Hello. Good afternoon. I get to use a fancy clicker. All right. So what I have for you this afternoon is the results of the public survey that we just completed, and some other demographic data, and a staff survey that went out as part of our strategic planning process. These were planned and conducted by Dr. Robert Bergen from R&amp;B Software and Consulting, and he is the consultant that we were awarded through our LSTA grant this year. So, the full document I attached to the packet, but this is a brief overview, kind of the who, what, where, when, and why, as I didn't want to give you the whole 170 pages worth of rundown there. So, who is currently using the library? Right now, we have 95,000 people who are cardholders in the county, 91,000 at the end of the last fiscal year. And with the demographic report that Dr. Bergen pulled from just census data, this is not surprising, I know, to any of us. We've been talking about it for a while, but the county is getting younger, and it is getting more diverse. So we've been seeing a lot of that through requests for different items, different materials, and just, you know, people coming in the library, showing interest in different kinds of subjects. So that's been really interesting to see that grow. I also compiled some data based on where our cardholders are coming from. So at about 90,000, 95,000, we have roughly 45% of the population that has a library card right now. And what I thought was interesting is that 24% of that population is coming from that 28027 area code in the western part of the county. And something that definitely stood out in survey comments were how many people were requesting a library in that part of the county, which again, I know is not surprising to us, but they were very supportive of that. That's also, of course, where we know the faster population growth is happening out there.
Excuse me, Emery, 28027, where's that?
That's...
That's me. George Afton.
Afton?
Yes, out that way. So what is going on in the library? How are they using it? And what do they think about it? So, Dr. Bergen compared the Cabarrus County Public Library System to the other 58 library systems in the state that are run by county government, and we are performing very well, which made me very excited. So I've got a couple key performance measures there for you compared to other library systems, and that first one is program attendance per capita, where it's kind of been very slowly declining in other library systems. Ours has increased fairly drastically there over the past few years. And I know you've heard me talk about that before, when we say we have to turn people away from Harrisburg, that the room is too full, and things like that, so we're enjoying great attendance there. Those next two have to do with the circulation. So collection turnover and total collection use. We are still performing much better than the average public library system there, with actual, you know, increases in circulation over the past two years. So that's been really exciting to see, when the national trend has been downward. Also, reference transactions, which is people coming in for help on job applications, creating a resume, you know, using a database, those basic help transactions. Library visits per capita, we're also doing better than the average. And then the one where we aren't on this chart is the percentage of population registered. So we're slightly lower there, which has been my goal for a while, to get to 50%, so we're still working on that. The perceived value, that chart on the right side of the screen, so this is what the public had to say in terms of what services were most important to them at the library. And of course, you know, books were the top ones, no surprise there. The books for adults, we were surprised to see that being top rated, as children's materials tend to circulate at about twice the rate that adult services or adult books do. But still, they value the print books. Those are specifically the print books that they're referencing. Also, programs for children, and the website, and different ways to find information. Something to note about the website, we did get a lot of comments in the survey about finding information, accessing the website, but we did not make a distinction between the actual county website and the catalog site in that survey. So there are some that we're not quite sure which one they're talking to, are talking about, because they reported that the website was hard to use, or it was hard to find information. So we're going to have to dig a little deeper and figure out which one that is, and do some kind of further assessment there. But people are going to the online presence to find information. One thing that kind of stood out to the entire staff as we reviewed this is the public perception of what's important doesn't necessarily translate to usage. The picture that our data, our usage data reports back to us doesn't always gel with this. For example, the public computers are about halfway on that chart in terms of usage or perceived importance, and that has been declining year by year. So we have not, you know, considered that to be an increasing resource, but we are one of the highest in the state, seventh out of those other 58 library systems in terms of number of people using our public computers. So I thought that was fairly significant. In terms of overall perception, 92% of people reported that the quality of customer service and support was excellent or very good, and 80% said our ability to meet their needs is excellent or very good. So when and where are people coming to the library, which branches? Last year, we had, last fiscal year, we had about 370,000 unique visits to the libraries, and that's all of them combined. So by branch, of course, you know, Concord being the biggest library, we tend to have the biggest attendance as well, so 46% of our cardholders are registered at Concord, 27 in Kannapolis, 22 in Harrisburg, five in Mount Pleasant, and a little less than 1% is Midland now, I'm sure, until we get that library open. So what I thought was really kind of interesting to see is that despite the numbers, people in Mount Pleasant are still the most likely to visit a branch most often. The general trend there, as you can see on the chart, was two to three times per month is the usual amount of time people spend coming to the library, with a few going two to three times per week or daily. And most of those people are in Mount Pleasant. So that's a heavily used library. Hours were another big source of feedback. People said that they wanted later hours in the evening on weekdays, extended weekend hours, and we got several comments about being open on Sundays, which is another interesting thing to see for us, because we track kind of heat mapping data and other usage data, and we very rarely have people in the library after seven, even though right now, the four bigger branches are open till 8:00 at night. We don't see a lot of traffic. We also don't tend to get a lot of program attendance on the weekends, on Saturdays. So that is a point of discussion that we'll have to, again, dig in a little further to see what people will come for on a Saturday. They say they want it, we just don't know what exactly they want yet. So right now, we're open 60 hours a week in Concord, Kannapolis, and Harrisburg, 54 hours per week in Mount Pleasant, and then Midland will be open 24 hours per week to begin with when we open that branch. And then, in terms of location, kind of what I was referencing earlier, and this chart I stole from the boards packet from the receipt in January, because I love this map. And this may not be 100% accurate, because this was me kind of just mapping things on my own, but the yellow stars are our existing branches. The blue star right there is Midland, and then that red circle represents that 28027 area code. And when we asked people what their limits to using the library were, 57% said that there was not a location that was convenient. And kind of the feel that we got from people's comments is if they have to drive more than about 20 minutes, they're probably just not going to come. A lot of people kind of referenced that, the traffic sitting there. So especially for people kind of on the border areas there, they tend to go to Mecklenburg County libraries, which is expensive, you know, compared to free usage. It does cost $45 or more a year to use the Mecklenburg County libraries if you're not a resident. But we did find that a lot of people are using those just for convenience sake. Those neighborhoods and areas under that specific location were places that people just mentioned by name. They live in those areas, they want a library that's closer, and the others are just not convenient for them. And then finally, again, there are thousands and thousands of comments that we went through to try to kind of gauge the largest areas in which we can improve. So these are a very broad overview, but locations and facilities, again, were definitely the standout there. A lot of Harrisburg and Mount Pleasant residents really want a larger branch that will accommodate the growth in those areas, and the amount of usage that they get. Every branch, those patrons responded wanting more quiet spaces, which has been really difficult for us, because all of our facilities right now are wide open, and they are getting busier. So it is much harder to control the noise levels in the libraries now than I'm sure it once was. Collections and resources, because again, the county itself is diversifying. People want a lot more subjects, a lot more variety, and they want things in their hands faster. Luckily, that's already things that we've been working on, so it'll be great to continue along that path. Children's services as well. There's a big focus on early literacy in the county right now. We've actually got a grant in the works potentially to help us out with some early literacy initiatives, but the survey results told us that we're on the right path there, since children's services was something that everybody wants more of. And again, hopefully more evening and weekend programs when working parents can bring their kids to the library as well. The hours, we already discussed, I'm definitely open to exploring and changing those, but those would definitely have a budget impact, so it's something we would definitely need to work through. Advertising and awareness, this is something we've discussed for a while now. I think that we've all done a great job in trying to find new ways to get information to people, but for whatever reason, the methods that we're using now just don't seem to be getting the message across. We get a lot of Facebook comments like, "Oh, I wish I'd known about this sooner," or, you know, "Where do I find out about these things?" So we're constantly giving people the link to the online events page and things like that, but maybe more strategizing there to figure out where people are getting their information would help us garner more traffic. And then teen and adult programs specifically, again, those books were seen as highly utilized resources, but especially for adults and teens, they're looking for more relevant topics for their life at the moment. And we're still trying to kind of put our finger on the things that will draw people out who aren't, you know, those avid book lovers, but that we can still reach through programs. So our next steps for the strategic plan, we have a meeting with our consultant on November 29th, and the library employee steering committee will be meeting with him for that. And they're going to be identifying some of those major areas of focus that we can start to include in the strategic plan. So that is the very broad overview. If you have any questions or comments, happy to try to answer.
How many surveys did you get completed?
We had 1,050 respondents.
Right.
So that boost really helped at the last minute there.
I was just saying, it was a lot of information.
Yes.
And a lot of numbers, seventh and eighth, but all the numbers looked really good. I can't recall them all, but that was a lot of information, and good information, I think, for us. And like I say, I agree with Commissioner Morris, it appeared to be a nice, well-rounded sampling of data to go by. So thank you for the information.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Excuse me. The night that I went to the fair to be a part of our Cabarrus County booth...
Yes.
...there were two staffers from the library that were there, and they kept telling the patrons that came by about a streaming service that the county offers, and nobody knew about it. So would you like to take a minute to explain that to our viewing audience?
Absolutely. So they were talking about Hoopla, and that is one of our newest resources that we did just receive this fiscal year, that we kind of moved some other money around for, and dropped another service to add this one. And the Hoopla is a streaming service. You can use it on a tablet or a smartphone. If you have an Apple TV, or I think a Roku as well, it works on all of those, and you just have to download the app. Everyone gets four items per month. So they're audiobooks, ebooks, videos, either movies or episodes of TV shows, all of those things are things you can check out with Hoopla. And it's for adult users at this moment, but we may expand that later down the road if we need to. But so far, it's been growing each month in usage. That was one of the things that people were really asking for, for the past few years, so we delivered.
It only takes a library card to be able to, and the app?
Yes, and you only have to sign into that one time. It remembers it the rest of the time. So you just pull up your Hoopla app and start checking out and watching.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate all the information, and certainly the good job that you folks do at the library all the time.
Thanks.
Okay, next on our agenda, tax administration. David Thrift.
So thank you for your time this evening. Just wanted to provide you with some information on a new initiative that we are referring to as motor vehicle gap billing. To describe what that is, I think a little history is in order. So as you may be aware, back in 2013, the North Carolina legislation changed the way that motor vehicle taxes were billed for registered motor vehicles. The new system referred to as Tax and Tag now has registered motor vehicle owners that pay their annual property taxes at the time when they register a vehicle, or when they renew their registration. Since that transition, there's been, there are instances in which registered motor vehicles have their registrations expire, and then sometime later, those vehicles are reregistered with a new registration date. So what that creates is a period of time in which the registration has lapsed, which we call a gap in that registration. So that's a period of time in which the property is not taxed through the current tag and tax system. So the county is required by statute 105-330 to collect property taxes for vehicles that have even a short lapse in that registration. However, until the past year, we simply didn't have the machinery to make that happen. We didn't have a way to do that. We now receive monthly reports from DMV, which identify those gaps in registration. So we have the ability to begin to acquire some of that lost revenue that we've experienced. So technically, how we're going to do this is when we receive a report from the DMV that explains what the period of the gap is. For example, say if that's a four-month period in which the vehicle wasn't registered. We'll take the value of the vehicle on January 1st of that year that we received the report. We'll divide that by 12 to establish the monthly value, and then we'll multiply the period of the gap that was in place by that monthly value to establish the prorated value for the vehicle for the period of time that it wasn't being taxed. We'll then create a tax bill based on the current tax rates for both county and municipalities, and send those out to the taxpayers. Those will become tax bills that are due on the next September 1st, from the time when they're created. So this month, when we create these gap bills, we'll send them out. They'll become regular 2019 personal property bills. They'll be due on September 1st and past due next January 6th. So our plan is to start this process this month in November, so towards the end of November, we're going to send what will be our largest batch. We're going to start with July 1st, this past July, through October, send four months' worth of gap bills. And then we plan to continue on a monthly basis as we get those DMV reports to bill these gap bills, so we get the information to the taxpayers as soon as possible, at the time, as close to the time when the gap took place, that they have that information and have that bill. So this being a new process, we're a little unclear at this point what the total revenue impact will be, particularly in the long term. Based on the current information we have, and the information we're getting ready to bill, we're going to have what looks to be about 300 to 350 bills per month, potential there being around 15,000 in revenue for the county portion of those bills. So this could be a significant revenue piece that we've been unable to capture previously, that we will now have the opportunity to do so.
So on the old system, when we were billing directly, and it wasn't with the licensing or the registration, didn't matter whether, these gaps didn't occur because we billed anyway?
That's correct. So this is a situation that was created by the new system being put in place. We just, it's taken a while to catch up with the technology to be able to identify those, and then to be able to bill them properly.
So now you said the goal was to get them out as soon as possible...
Yes.
...so that they'll know that this extra bill is coming through, that they may not be expected?
That's correct.
Is there a, I take it, there's some explanation inside of that, like what we have here that'll fill them?
Sure, so we've put together some general question and answers. We're going to have some information on the website. We're finishing the design of the actual bill that we're going to be sending out, to try to provide as much detail as possible about what it is, while still making that clear and understandable. So when we send those bills out, there'll be explanations there. We're going through a period of training all of our staff to be able to answer any questions if we have questions from the taxpayer, and this taking an opportunity like this just to make folks aware that this is coming.
And then with the 300 to 350 per month, so that's about, what, 4,000 or so a year? What percentage of that is your tax bills that go out? Any idea?
It's a very small percentage of...
That's okay.
This is not a large percentage of motor vehicles that experience this. It's only in a case in which that registration expires, and there's a period of time, and when they go to the DMV to reregister the car, a new registration date is given, as opposed to using the original date.
So that's what triggers it, when they reregister?
That's correct. So at the point when they reregister, is when the DMV will then notify us what period of time was existing in that gap between the last time their registration expired, until the point when they've reregistered. So that could be any number of, one month and up until multiple years, depending upon the actions of the vehicle owner.
So would that impact people that collect, car collectors that don't have tags on them, they just have them in storage? If they decide to put a tag on it, then that could trigger a couple of years?
So in those instances, those vehicles are currently listed and taxed through our regular personal property taxes.
Okay.
And that would not be a case in which this would apply. This would simply apply to a vehicle whose registration expired. It had been paying taxes through that tag and tax system...
Right.
...and there's a period of time in which those taxes weren't paid. If we can show that the property was listed as personal property, then that certainly wouldn't be an instance in which we would bill.
Right. Any other questions for David?
I do, Mr. Chairman. David, first off, thank you for being here. Thank you for doing a good job for us in the tax office there. My question is relative to the system that you are going to be able to do this gap tax with. Will it have a way to determine the feasibility of sending a bill out to someone? What I mean is, if they two weeks or three weeks behind, and the tax bill's 30 cent, and it's going to cost us a buck to send out the letter...
Sure.
...is there a way that we can limit that? Number one. And then, it would seem like that it would be carried forward to the next billing cycle versus billing for it right then, because that's going to offset the revenue with the expense.
So to the first part, we do have a policy in place, a resolution, that we don't send property tax bills out for less than $5. And that will apply in this instance as well. So, there are a number of these that a gap is created, but because of either the value of the vehicle or the length of time, it's just not going to create an instance in which we create a tax bill. So, we will have some limits on that. In terms of the revenue applying to the period, so the reason that this is set up to do this is, for example, the bills that we'll be creating this month will not be due, they'll be 2019 tax bills, they'll not be due until next year. The benefit of that is for the taxpayer to have a period of time in which they have to pay that tax bill without getting it at the end of the month or end of the year, and it becomes then a delinquent tax bill within a short period of time. This gives them ample opportunity to address that bill and for us to collect on it.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, County Manager, Cabarrus County Strategic Plan.
I'm going to bring Lauren and Kristen, who are going to come up and join me, and I'll introduce them and then let them talk to you a little bit about the schedule they're proposing. But we are proposing that the staff and the board go through the strategic planning process. It's time, there's a lot, there's so much going on, the needs are getting larger and larger, the availability of funds seems to get smaller and smaller. So, what we're going to be asking you to do over the next several months is to establish some new goals and objectives and strategies, which will not only be from your thinking, but it's going to direct how we budget, how we, through our departments, identify the needs that they need to do within their own departments, but to meet your needs or your goals and objectives. It's getting tougher and tougher. We've got a limited amount of funding and a whole lot more work to do. We've got a lot of capital buildings coming on. We've got a lot of deferred maintenance for the schools and for the county. And all of our, even the ones that don't have any deferred maintenance on it, the buildings are getting older. It's hard to believe that we've been in this building since 1990. And then every time something happens, what do you just see? The storm had quite a bit of damage there, here and over at a brand-new, or another newer facility over at the Sheriff's Department. So, we're constantly trying to, we've been doing that some internally, but we want to make sure that we're lining up what we do on the staff level with what you really want to see from your level as well. So, we're going to be looking at that, and then, of course, we're going to continue our performance budgeting. And then, as you heard Emery say earlier, they're working on their strategic plan within the system, the library system. Londa and her group have a livable community blueprint that they update every year. So, we want to make sure that both, that they're looking at something that is what you're needing for the community or projecting for the community, but also, we want to make sure that, you know, what they do find within their studies on the departmental level are actually something that we can achieve at this level, and that we can fund soon, in a reasonable amount of time, not 20 years from now, or whatever. So, we want to make sure we're lining up our activities, our funding, with your goals and objectives. And it's, as I said, with the things that are happening so quickly now, and the buildings that we're needing to build are not cheap, and they're not going to get any cheaper. So, we need to make sure that we're all going in the right direction. So, I'll let, Lauren, you want to talk about what they can expect over the next little bit?
Haven't seen us in a while, have you? We're back. So, I'm just going to go ahead and give you our definition of a strategic plan. It's an ongoing process of creating an action plan and setting the related priorities, goals, objectives, to achieve a shared vision and mission. Notice it says "ongoing." So, the last time we updated our strategic plan was about five years ago. I think right now, we need to work on why we need to create our strategic plan. So, a better question right now is, what do we need to focus on now that wasn't around or happening five years ago? So, several things came up while we were preparing this year's budget. We were talking about growing population, changing demographics, smart growth, sustainability, transportation, as we all know, the opioid epidemic, and mental health issues, education funding, technology changes, and like Mike was saying, capital needs. So, what this is going to look like, what we propose is, for fiscal year 2020, we want to do a short strategic plan. We just want to align this budget year. We want to make a final decision on a mission and vision statement for, I think that you all heard it whenever Kasha presented it last year. She's going to actually look at that again for us. We're going to look at the four goals and see if we need to tweak them for this year. This part is actually going to include you guys, us, county managers, and communications. And we're hoping to meet at the December 3rd work session to start working on this and try to solidify plan then, just to work on fiscal year 2020. Then, moving forward into 2021, we want to do a full strategic plan overview. So, that will include reassessment of mission, vision, goals, and performance measures. Just get everything in alignment, make sure everything is feeding into each other, what we want, what you guys want from us, and what our citizens want from us, basically. That phase will incorporate, so forming a committee. We'll have guided exercises to reevaluate goals and objectives. We'll set a timeframe so that we know when we need to reassess and do another full overview. We will work on getting our community organizations, like outside agencies and department heads involved. Then, in 2022, we will consider incorporating new software to help us track measures throughout the organization. We're currently researching programs. We sort of have one in mind. And this will allow for greater accountability, transparency, and overall organizational responsibility for the full, big picture. We understand the need for flexibility in this process.
I think too, you definitely want to get some public input in there somewhere throughout the process, not just at the beginning, but throughout the process. But we also want to, again, through the budget process, make sure that you feel comfortable that we're directing funds to the proper locations, to make sure we're meeting your plan. But also, you and we all get recommendations and suggestions throughout the years, or throughout the budget year, sometimes the next week after the budget's passed, and they all are good ideas. But if you have a plan in place, you can have some flexibility, but you want to stick to your plan. So, it gives you the opportunity to have those conversations with those that are coming in and offering more suggestions and different things that aren't part of your plan. Without going back and revising your plan, you would stick to the plan and fund accordingly, and build accordingly, and provide the services accordingly. But we want to make sure that you guys have something in place, so that we, as staff, can implement it, but then also the public knows, why are we spending the money where we're spending? And they'll have a plan, and they'll have a basis as to why it is. And of course, they can always question it, and they can always offer suggestions, but sometimes the plan may take two or three years to get through the process, and it's not something that you want to change back and forth. So, we just want to, we want to introduce it to you tonight. Again, we'll start talking, and we'll spend much more time in December, and I'm sure as we progress, there may be some additional meetings that we may have to schedule just to get some more input back from you. Any questions or anything we can try to answer them, or everybody?
So, the very first immediate goal is to assess the four goals? That's what we're talking about doing in December, or?
In December, I'd like to tweak them. And this is going to be a lot bigger of a process than, it's kind of an overhaul. So, that's why we're shooting for 2020 for that. But for right now, if there are any immediate needs that we think need to go in those four goals, then that's what I would say needs to be reassessed at that December 3rd meeting.
That's, I just wanted to see where the, sort of the launching ad was.
Just starting slow.
Yeah, the big thing is, go back and look at those goals we have now. You know, we've made some, we've accomplished some of them, some of them we haven't. The ones we haven't, are they still relevant?
Right.
Or do we just change those now and move in a different direction? Or do we create some different strategies? If we haven't already met them, why not? Then what are some different strategies we can go after them? So, but we want to make sure we get back, we want to build that foundation first before we start chipping it out, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we move now to discussion items. First up, active living in parks, 2019 fees and charges policy, Londa Strong.
Good afternoon. Thank you all for letting us do this again early, so we can have it ready for January. If, will you scroll through? Would you all like me to go through? There's not many. Would you like me to go through, or have you read them and have questions? I'm sorry? Yeah. There's not many. You tell me what you want. I'll be glad to go through them one by one.
I had one question-
Yes, sir.
-about the hours. Does this, I know we've had discussions several different times about opening earlier in the summer for people that walk when it's cooler, and is that incorporated in here?
Yes, it's incorporated in here, so we don't have to worry about coming back every year. We were-
Right.
-able to flex schedules-
Great.
-so that there was minimal amount of change in salary.
Good, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I think some people were very happy that we were able to accommodate.
There were a lot of people in there at 7:00, but, you know, since we started closing at 5:00 on November 1st-
Mm-hmm.
-we've locked some people in and had some people, you know, why are you here? Of course, we had nice, warm weather.
Right.
Why are you closing at 5:00? So, we just try to go through with what our hours are and try to make them happy. Now that it's cooler, it's not as difficult, and the time change, it's not as difficult. Most people are ready to go.
So, y'all are not able to control the weather at the parks?
We have got a weather machine and station, but it's out of order. I've done a work order two or three times with Mr. Billiford, and he just can't seem to get it fixed.
Gotcha.
But you would think that we would.
Yeah.
The only policy, not a change, it was just on the policy part of it, not the fees part. There was just a clarification on the cancellation policy, but that was the big red. The other things were just grammatic changes. And on the fees section, the 7:00 AM was added in, and then the fees that were changed were only at Frankliss Park, and that was in reference to the size of the facility that they were, if it was $50 in Shed 1, and it held 75 people, but we were charging $60 for Barnhart, and it held 60 people. So, we just evened it up, made sure if it holds 60 people, you're paying the same thing, regardless of which facility that you're in. And then we added, the only thing that's added is the rental fee for projector, TV for the upstairs of the barn. We'd had a lot of requests for that, and we put that in the budget last year, and we have that. So, you can go up there and make a nice presentation now, and that's the rental fee, and it is secured. I promise you, it is secured, and the others are just making things the same, if it's, or even, or round it up. Nothing, no increases. How's that?
Any questions for Londa? I think the fees are very reasonable for what?
We check with the surrounding counties, specifically municipalities are a little bit different, so we don't carry as much weight on those. And we're pretty even with everybody around.
Great. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, from Finance, incentive payment for SMG, and we're happy to have Susan Ferington.
So, once a year, we come to you with the incentives for the SMG, who's the company who runs our Cabarrus Remain and Event Center. So, this year, not just like other years, the incentives are based on quantitative and qualitative measurements, as well as food sales volumes. So, for this year, a quantitative and qualitative incentive of $27,302 has been earned, and a food and beverage incentive of $46,191 has been earned. So, this is a total of $73,493. And the paperwork was in their agenda item on how this was calculated. This is the 13th year that we have paid the incentives to the SMG. As in, in past years, we've been funding this through an appropriation from fund balance, which is what we're recommending again this year. Questions?
Does this, how does this amount compare with previous years?
I have that here. Flip over to, I have, actually, I have it marked, where during the past 13 years, the highest we've paid a combined incentive was $161,000, and that was back in, let me see if I'm, 2014. And then the lowest amount we've ever paid is $65,826, and that was last year. So, this one's 73. It's, like I said, it's been a range of 161 down to 65,000, so some years are up and some are down, but this is very consistent with last year, a little higher than last year.
Okay, any other questions for Susan? All righty, and I think you've got about the next 10 agenda items, but actually, the Sheriff's Administration Building roof.
Okay. As you know, we've just spoke about that earlier. I heard you speak about the damage that we had during the several storms, wind and rain. As a result, there's approximately $150,000 worth of damage that needs to be repaired over at the Sheriff's Administration Building. So, last week, we actually had received some insurance proceeds of $88,000. The agenda item includes a project, excuse me, a budget amendment to receive the money and make the repairs. However, we will not spend $150,000 if it's needed, if it's not needed, but Kyle has some input too on this agenda item.
I can answer any questions about the specific damage, what occurred, how it occurred, and what we're going back with.
Let's do that.
Okay. We have had issues prior to this with water intake through the roof, but this event that happened during Hurricane Michael, I believe the highest wind that we registered in the county was 53 miles per hour. I don't know what it took to pull up the coping, but the coping is the metal edge that goes around the edge of the building. So, it's what you would see from Church Street if you were driving down, you would see a metal edge of the roof. Although, that metal coping is supposed to have all sorts of clips, every few inches, every feet, to hold it on there, and that's the membrane of the roof goes up underneath that. There was a significant failure of the coping. Once that pulled up, the wind actually was able to get underneath the membrane, and once that happens, that's essentially what you do. You lose a roof. It's called a parachute, and it parachuted about 5,000 square feet of that roof. It actually did pull the coping off. We responded, there was two employees that were there, and then Michael Miller and myself responded within the first 25 minutes. And by the time we got there and walked out on that, it actually, the parachuting effect threw me back off of the roof. That's how dangerous it could come. We transported probably in excess of 80 to 90 sandbags up there with a chain of probably 12 employees, and kept working our way out to the edge to keep that roof from coming off during that event. Obviously, we had water intrusion at that point through that. Part of the problem is that that membrane roof was not mechanically adhered. It was glued. That's how it was specced during the design of that building. So, what we're proposing to come back with is a mechanically adhered roof that does not use that type of coping system. It is literally mechanically adhered to the parapet wall, has nothing to do with the coping, so that that intrusion cannot happen in terms of the wind intrusion. So, that's, once it gets in there, that's essentially what happens if parachutes like that. And to give you an idea of what that means, as we were throwing sandbags on it, it was throwing the sandbags back at us. The roofing process will take probably six weeks. We'll work closely with the Sheriff's Department and Rowan Cabarrus Community College, who has a sublease of the space up there for basic law enforcement training. We have made repairs to that roof. We've been out there with our insurance company several times, and like Ms. Ferington said, they've already given us a check for $88,000, which is the depreciated value of that roof that we'll be going over with. And we'll literally only rip out probably- And we'll literally only rip out probably a third of that roof. We'll re-roof right over it in terms of mechanically adhering.
So, how has it been faring during all these other rains since then? Is it temporary repairs to?
Our temporary repairs have, have held. We haven't had any more water intrusion. We had roughly between seven and twelve thousand dollars of work to be done on the seventh floor that involves painting, new carpet, drywall. We responded pretty quickly, and we've had water intrusion issues with that building before, so we know our hot spots. It's a little bit different. When you see that, when, when you get a video on your computer of that roof parachuting like that, when you're sitting in the office fifteen minutes away, you realize that that's not just a water leak that you need to get there, and the Infrastructure and Asset Management Department, three different divisions responded to get all of that done. So, we could have lost that entire roof. In fact, if we had not done what we had, I think we would have lost that entire roof. We did evacuate the seventh floor, just because if we had lost it, we would have started to lose some of the metal decking. So, we evacuated the students.
I did, I did see the short video, and it's much more dramatic than the still pictures.
Yeah. I hope you muted it.
Don't think I did.
The only thing, other thing I can tell you is obviously the coping was never warranted, nor is it. It's the actual workmanship, and that only has a year warranty. These roofs have been issues for the entire complex since we put them in. The roofing company that was subcontracted by our construction manager at risk went out of business soon after these buildings were built, and we've had another company that has picked up the warranty on the actual membrane. However, since the failure wasn't the membrane itself, it was the actual coping, none of this was going to be covered under warranty. So, that's why we're, we're coming in front of you to basically put on a roof that can get us to twenty years.
Okay, questions for Kyle or Susan? All righty. We move now to update of Capital Reserve Fund. Susan, again.
Okay. As part of a interlocal agreement with the City of Concord, if you remember, we have made, they made a three-million-dollar contribution towards the parking deck project that's ongoing. This agenda item will update the Capital Reserve Project Ordinance and the related budget amendment for the contribution. And at your December meeting, we'll be presenting our two thousand, June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen CAFR, and at that time, we'll have a new balance of Capital Reserve money to spend for one-time projects, and this is based on the county's fifteen percent fund balance policy. So, we'll give you an update at that time of how much money that we will be able to spend on one-time projects like this. As you know, we try to pay things with cash, pay-as-you-go instead of borrowing and increasing our debt. So, this is very helpful with our capital projects.
Okay, questions on that one? Okay, we move to four point five, RCC Advanced Technology Center, Capital Reserve.
The Advanced Technology Building is, is being built. We've paid two invoices so far and have a third one that we'll pay within the next two weeks. So, it's, it's moving along, but there was some funding that we had left behind because they were not ready for it yet in the Capital Reserve, and it's time now to transfer that money over, some engineering and the furniture and equipment money. So, this agenda item will do a, has a budget amendment and a project ordinance, so we can transfer the remaining piece of, of the funding for this Advanced Technology Center over to the Capital Projects Fund, so we can spend the money. So, this is the mechanism we need to go through.
Fortunately, there, there really is an actual building. We've been talking about this for quite a few years, and it's nice to see it taking shape finally. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and we have Anthony Hodges with us from Human Services to talk about CCTS passenger policy.
How are y'all today? Also have Bob Bushey, our Transportation Manager, with me, and actually Stan Parnell back there too, to answer questions if, if y'all have any, because they're, they're much more knowledgeable about this than I am. What we have for you today is our transportation policy, or for our passenger policy for CCTV transportation. What we've done is over the last few months is kind of take a lot of the policies that we already have and put them in one document and clarify some things as far as what our policy is for, for all the passengers on the vans, and also the policy toward disruptive behavior, or what would qualify for a suspension or termination of policy. Stan presented this policy to our Transportation Advisory Board a few months ago. We, we made some, a little bit of adjustment on that, and then added a place too for our clients to sign the policy, saying that they've seen the policy and they're aware of what the procedures are, the policies are, the ramifications of not following those policies.
Questions for Anthony or Bob?
Just Anthony, on this, I guess everywhere you go, you've got rowdy people. Do you have a lot of rowdy people ride our bus?
It's, we don't have a lot, but when we do, it can be a big problem. It's not usually small things that happen. It usually causes, you know, several meetings.
Do you usually, do you find that it's usually the same people, the same riders, that cause the issue?
No, a lot of times, it's random on who does it. I mean, it's been anything from salts to theft. We've had that on the vehicle. It's, it's not often, but it's often enough that we have to have a way to deal with it that can be backed up with a policy.
Sure. I guess just somebody having a bad day, that's all I can figure, you know, because somebody offer you transportation that, you know, that we do. If I was in that situation, I'd be so glad to have somebody to help me. Surely, I'd probably sit down and be quiet, just get me where I'm going, you know? But some people's not like that, and I understand.
Well, and, and a lot of the passengers we carry, it's not like the city bus route. A lot of the passengers we carry are, are very sick with some kind of mental condition, so they're, they're dealing with that. They're, they're dealing with a lot of things while they're on our vehicle, and sometimes it just accumulates into a, a bad day, as you say.
I noticed that we did not address or have a policy, or it doesn't specifically address service animals. Is that something that we may need to consider? A passenger, I mean, we, the first line item talks about canes and wheelchairs and whatnot, but I just wasn't sure from a liability standpoint or from any other kind of standpoint if that's something we need to address.
Well, that's an ADA law, service animals. I mean, we could put something in there, but it's already a law that we have to follow if somebody has a service animal.
I guess I'm thinking more of making sure that, do we need to, there's a lot of people carrying dogs around that may or may not be licensed service animals, and whether we're going to say, come on aboard, and we're not going to question it, or?
The only thing we're allowed to say is, is that a service animal? We can't ask for documentation or anything like that.
Okay, so it's up to them to represent what the animal is?
Correct. You're talking about the difference between an ADA service animal and an emotional support animal, and there is a difference, and staff goes through training on the questions they can and can't ask.
Okay.
That happens at the library occasionally also.
Okay, any other questions? I've shared with Bob over the years, some interesting phone calls I've received from passengers because the other passengers talk too much and so forth and so on, so they do have some challenges from time to time. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have also from Human Services, in-home aid policy, and Anthony, stand with us.
Yes, sir. This is what I've given you, it's our in-home aid policy, that you, you originally approved this policy in January of two thousand sixteen. We are certified through the Division of Aging and Adult Services at the state to provide Level One Home Management Services directly, and that's, that's our in-home aids that assist our clients with grocery shopping, some other errands, transportation to, to doctors if they need assistance going in and out of the doctor, or need someone with them. It, it's, it's those individuals that do that, and we're coming up now, our certification expires at the end of this year, so in December, the, our adult program representative from the Division of Aging and Adult Services will be here to redo, do our recertification visit, and he'll look at all of our processes and those kind of things. One of the things, all of that, he'll look at this policy, and when he was here a few months ago, just on a normal visit, it was his recommendation to have this policy reaproved. His reasoning mainly was because we have a new director now. I did go through and make a few adjustments to the policy, nothing major, took out some programs that we used to offer that we don't offer anymore, and adjusted some numbers, but otherwise, it's, it's, for the most part, it's the same policy that you approved in two thousand sixteen.
And I think you did say this covers some shopping, grocery shopping, things of that nature?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we, what we do with these clients that do that, we, we have three county employees, part-time employees that, that use the county cars. We do, either do grocery shopping for them, or take them shopping if they're, if they're able, either to grocery shopping or other errands, and then most of our other things is either taking them to, to doctor's appointments. And again, this is mainly for individuals that would need assistance, can't just ride the van, they would need assistance with someone helping them into the doctor's office or being with them while they're at the doctor.
So, when you receive that phone call about a county employee being in a county vehicle shopping at Food Line, which I have gotten before?
I think you've gotten a, a poster too. Yes, sir.
Yeah, that, that's the explanation.
Yes, sir. Yes, we, yes. Yes, sometimes we do have citizens call to, to report that our, our workers are at Food Line or, or somewhere, but they're, they're, they're working.
Great, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, Infrastructure and Asset Management, Frankless Park Lower Lot Restroom Bid Award, and Kyle will talk with us about it.
On September twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen, the county advertised the bid package for the construction of the Frankless Park Lower Lot Restroom. The advertisement was posted on the Cabarrus County's website, and the hyperlink is provided. A mandatory pre-bid meeting was held at the governmental center in the multipurpose room on October second, two thousand eighteen, and sealed bids were collected on October eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, at two PM. Yates-Creutzberg and Hughes Architects in Cabarrus County have reviewed the sealed bids, and we are recommending that the bid be awarded to Ike's Construction, which was the bid winner with the low base bid. The requested action from the board tonight is to suspend your rules and approve the bid award and authorize the county manager to execute the contract between Cabarrus County and Ike's Construction, subject to the revision by the county attorney, and approve the related project ordinance and budget amendment that's attached. The reason that we're asking the board to suspend the rules is we have a tight window to try to have this thing open in the spring, in March, and we've got a lot of construction work, so I want to be able to give them a, a notice to proceed and have them go immediately.
Okay, questions for Kyle?
And just for the board's reference, since I know you guys are often asking about construction costs, there were four bidders, and those construction costs ranged on those four, between the swing from the low to the high was two hundred thousand dollars.
Wow.
What's even more alarming is the swing from the lowest to the second lowest was a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So, typically, when I'm up here telling you about the different construction cost I'm seeing and the different percentages versus what we're, what we've budgeted for, what we've gotten a projected cost years before, those are showing some of the swing numbers that I've presented in front of the board prior to this.
That's amazing.
I just have one, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, on a percentage basis of the total project, that's a pretty high percentage, isn't it?
Yes, it is. There's also an eight-inch sewer line that is a big driver of this.
Right.
That's a big driver of this cost. That, that side of the park does not have the proper utilities for the growth of the park. We use this project to be able to put in this sewer line. Currently, from that side of the park, you are pumping sewage to the opposite side of your park, and you're pumping it at very shallow levels in a park that has historical rock that shifts. So, this is the safer way for the growth of that park.
My question, Kyle, is, with this being a relatively small amount of money compared to the contracts that we usually deal with, how did we come up with Yates-Creutzberg as the architect? Is it because of the amount being within your jurisdiction? Because I don't remember in my own memory that we had anything to do with the architect selection.
They submitted RFQs with other architects and staff, a committee of staff decided on them, but for our larger projects like our courthouse, yes, we go through a large committee like you sat on. I, I don't believe the county, we do not have a dollar figure that we say, okay, they can go ahead and handle this, and, you know, or we need to go above. I would tell you, when you start getting into the multi-million dollars, yes, the board is always involved, but for these projects that are approved CIPs?
Right.
It's my understanding that staff has the, the ability to make those decisions based on RFQ submittals.
I think that's sort of the way it was on the school board. Is that right, Blake?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the way it was on the school board. I, I was just wondering how we come up with this.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I can ask you to suspend the rules.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes.
Make a motion, maybe. Accept a bid between Cabarrus County? Nope. I'm sorry. I think I can remember it all, but I might mess up the part, making sure the county manager will please agree. Motion to approve the bid award, authorize the county manager to execute the contract for Cabarrus County's construction, subject to revision by the county attorney and approve the related project ordinance. A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you. Okay, we move now to item four point nine from ITS Enterprise Multifunctional Printer Contract, and we're glad to have Todd Chanley to educate us on that.
Well, thank you for having me tonight. Can't believe it's been five years already that we have, several of you participated in the, the process. Last time, we invited multiple vendors over to the Sheriff Administration Building to, to basically do kind of a, a roadshow for us. This time, we did informal bids. We, we allowed six vendors to come and meet with our staff and talk about the process. We gave them proposals on the types of devices that we had, and let them come back with their recommendations in that way. We did add additional five devices for services that have expanded over the five years, Bra Bos Park, Midland Library, and some other accounting functions like at the tax office, sheriff's office, and the communications and outreach. I'll bury the lead, and the good news is, is that the recommendation that I'm going to ask you to, that I'm going to make tonight is we'll save the county a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the next five years. So, the, the lowest bid came in at thirty thousand dollars less a year for these, for these copiers, including the five additional devices that we'll be getting, so all the, all seventy-three devices will be replaced. We are recommending that we use Hendrick's Business Solutions out of Matthews to replace those seventy-three devices. We, all of the seventy-three of those devices will be color capable, so we'll be expanding functionality with each of those. We rank them based on price, culture, support, and the type of solution they could provide to the county. I think you had some additional information in your packet that talked about Hendrick's and, and why we selected them. One of the things that stood out for us was the fact that they have the Coca-Cola contract here in the Charlotte region. Now, Canon, that is a nationwide Canon account, whereas the Canon dealer, Canon can select a local dealer or service that account themselves, and they awarded that to the Hendrick's group as well. They did the same with Snyder-Lance as well, so that stood out to us as the ability for them to really, you know, provide an excellent service for us. The other thing that we found that will be very happy, staff will be very excited about, was that there was an independent buyer's lab that is ranked- about, was that there was an independent buyer's lab that has ranked them, the Canon devices, as the best device three years in a row, and that they have a category that they have one misfeed for every 400,000 impressions. I can tell you that we don't experience that today or with any of the other vendors. We have a few more jams than that. So that was very impressive. It's actually unheard of, based on our research and things like that. And the other thing I want to note is, with this process, we will be implementing, I think it's maybe the last page in your packet there, that shows a picture of the device for the libraries, and we will be implementing the ability to take credit card payments at the multifunction device. We're currently doing some things that, you know, eat up some staff time, and we're going to improve that process for Emery and her staff. Finally, obviously, you guys will have some questions, but, you know, our goal is to ask you to allow the county manager to execute the contract on behalf of Cabarrus County and revisions by the county attorney.
As Todd said, this would be of savings of what we're currently paying over the next five years. This is one of those where the contract laws or the bidding laws require us to select the lowest responsible builder, and Todd said he's had a rubric. We didn't just look at price. We looked at serviceability, we looked at the machines, we looked at others. So this particular bid is not the lowest quote that we got, but the overall package of the service and the machines and everything else, we feel that we're most comfortable with that. And again, even though it's not the lowest bid that was given in price, we're still saving, we're making, having those savings over the next five years.
Is this just for the machines, any of the consumables?
So all toners included in our price and all the service for the devices, for the length of the contract. We supply the paper and the staples.
And so they provide the toner and...
All of the toner, and they dispose of the toner, and they pick up the bottles and what have you. So we do change them ourselves, but other than that, they, it's a full-service contract.
Well, I think, I think you're right about the library, and we have discussed that at trustees' meetings before about the ability to use credit cards. Will be a big plus for our patrons. Questions for Todd? All right. Very good. Thank you. Okay. Next, just Register of Deeds, refund of excise tax. And Rich Cook's going to handle that.
Yeah. I told him that because of this matter, he didn't need to show up. I could handle it for him. This is a refund of excise tax on a deed. What happened is this company, the seller had transferred between two related companies, and they had, they don't, when they do that, they don't have to pay excise tax on that kind of a transfer. It's only when they transfer it to somebody else, a third party, that you pay the excise tax. So they've paid it twice. They paid it, when they transferred it from one of their subsidiaries to the other, and then they paid it a second time when they transferred it to the third party. So they're trying to get back the excise tax for the time that they transferred between the two companies. And so that's $300, and under the law, they don't pay excise tax on transfer to a related company. It's a transfer for no value. So there would be no excise tax that would have been owed for that. But since the attorney that submits it is the one that tells them the registered deed for there's an excise tax that's supposed to be paid, you know, these kind of situations arise when somebody within a law firm not knowing what the transaction was or misunderstanding what the laws are that apply to it. So they're the ones that paid it, but they're trying to get back if they were not supposed to have to pay it. And that's what happened here. They paid it twice, and so they'll get one of the $300 amounts back.
Questions for Mr. Cook? All righty. Thank you. Next item, 4.11 from the Sheriff's Department, North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program Local Governmental Resolution. And I don't, I think Mr. Rankin is with us.
No, he's not. They're requesting the permission to apply for this grant for the safety training and equipment, and there would be program fees that would match, so we will make sure that there is, to have someone at the, is this on the consent agenda? Then we probably need to pull it off consent, and so they'll have somebody here to talk to you.
Okay. Very good. Okay. That takes us to the approval of our regular meeting agenda, which you all have a copy before you, and we just discussed one change...
Central area plan. I think I sent you an email on it.
Which on consent agenda, which one?
F-10.
F-10?
Just a...
So that would move F-10 to be G-3. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. We do have need of a closed session tonight. Prior to going into closed session, I would remind everyone that tomorrow is Election Day, so I hope everybody will go out and vote. I've heard reports that early voting was heavier than normal. That's a good thing, so hopefully tomorrow will be as well. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session, discuss pending litigation and personnel matters per North Carolina General Statute 143-318, Point 11A3 and 6.
No more closing.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And we are now in closed session. Thank you.